So in accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Maine in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency, as enacted to read section G1 MRSA subsection 403A, public proceedings through remote access during declarations of state of emergency. Due to COVID-19, this business meeting is being held with a mix of in-person and virtually through Zoom. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the maranacook.org YouTube channel. Please be aware that we are doing our best with audio, but acknowledge that audio can be challenging in a dual setting like this. Due to the change in the format of this board of directors meeting, please be aware that during the course of this meeting, the microphones of the viewing audience will be muted except during the identified portions of public comments at this meeting. For today's agenda, this is item number three. There is a chat feature in Zoom, but we will not be utilizing this feature for this meeting. If you have questions or comments, we respectfully ask that you contact the central office or email the superintendent or any board member and an answer will be provided as soon as possible. Again, we ask for the public's patience during these highly unusual circumstances. Thank you. So attendance and all votes will be done through roll call. So when your name is called, please cast your vote with the three available options of yes, approve, no, disapprove, or abstain. We are going to start this meeting with a roll call for board members. So board members, please make sure, especially if you're virtual, that you can hear us and we can hear you as I go through the roll call for attendance. So having said that, we'll start with Kim.
Here.
Wendy.
Here.
Dane, I believe is absent. Kathy?
Here.
Melissa is also absent. Alex?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
And Patty is with us virtually. Rebecca?
Here.
And Rebecca is also with us virtually. Betty?
Here.
Sean? I have not seen at this point. Gary?
Here.
And David? Not online either. So with that, I'll turn the meeting back over to Dr. Carr. The meeting starts with student representatives, and I do have the names, Dr. Carr, if you'd like to.
Are they listening?
They are here virtually, so they will give their reports virtually to us. The top three are from the middle school and the second two are from the high school.
So Emma Rosendahl?
Ros, yep.
Cooper Tarbeck and Rocco Scott. You're up on the board.
Hello.
Who would be going first, Emma, Rocco, or?
Emma. Cooper.
Or Cooper. Oh, Kristin? Okay, I guess Cooper is going first.
Okay.
Thank you, Cooper. This is the first time we do this, so we'll get it smoother for next month, but thank you for going first, I appreciate it.
So I am going to talk about the Katodin team and just some overall school things. So in their math classes, the Katodin team is working on their scale projects as a way to learn about scaling and proportions. The sixth grade project is to draw a picture they like, they draw a scale picture of a picture they like. The seventh grade project is making a timeline with their birthday set at zero and adding dates of events that happened during their lifetime. And the eighth grade project is to create an amusement park using scaling and linear algebra. In their minerals and geologic time class, they are learning about volcanoes, the rock cycle, erosion, and tectonic plates. They had to research and create a slideshow about a volcano somewhere on Earth, and next quarter, they will have a class on voting and civics. In their ELA class, they are writing narrative short stories and are working on peer editing. In their next quarter, they'll focus on informational writing as part of their study of civics. They had French and music as their UAs this quarter. So some school-wide events that happened were, on October 13th, we had our Black and Gold Day, where we'd wear black and gold colors to celebrate our return from the COVID quarantine. And on October 30th, we had a Halloween costume contest. The winners of these were Anna and Isabel for the cutest, Rocco one for the most unique, and the runner-ups for unique were Josh and Katie. Mrs. Magnus' advisory won the group award, and the foreign language teachers won the award for both teacher costumes. We're also continuing the tradition we started during remote learning this spring of including short trivia questions with the morning announcements. These have been ranging from questions about like which country has the most vending machines to things like what the first animated movie was, or questions about like geography and other science topics. We are also continuing to have a bunch of clubs in the school, they are just occurring virtually. These include the Manga Club Math Team, Geography Club Debate Team, Arts and Crafts Club, Environmental Club, Magic and Dungeons and Dragons Club, FitC Sports Club, Filmmaking Club, Student Government, Civil Rights Team, GSA Minecraft Club, Book Club, and Your Book Committee. We also, last week was our annual Make a Difference Week, and we did it virtually. So the advisory groups did activities to increase awareness, and the middle school raised $1,826 for the Mount Vernon Food Pantry and the Miranda Cook Area Food Pantry. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Emma?
So I'm going to talk about the Moose and Acadia teams. I'm going to start with the Moose team, and they've been doing the German and gym UAs this quarter, and they've been working covering the basics like numbers, greetings, and colors in German. And gym, they've been working on tennis, setting goals for the mile run, and talking about the fitness components such as health and skill. In the ELA class, they've been doing research projects on sports, and they've also been working on informational writing, how to use and find thesis, and finding the main idea. They've also been learning about geography and culture. In math, they've been sticking to the standards and will be continuing to do so. The Acadia team has been attending Spanish and Health UAs this quarter. In Spanish, they've been covering places that speak Spanish and doing research projects on them. They have also been doing numbers and dates. In health, they've been doing stress and its management, relationships, and substance abuse and prevention. In ELA class, Acadia has been learning about what makes a myth and a legend. They have also been learning about mindfulness and social emotional learning. They've been doing breathing exercises, Tai Chi, and a range of other activities. The team is currently in the middle of the bean process in order to find out what the themes are for the next quarter. Acadia is also preparing to do a mock Olympics in their Sports and Society class. Each cohort will be given an ancient Greek city-state to represent. It will be creating songs, costumes, and flags, and that is all I have.
Thank you very much.
I will be wrapping up by talking about the Royal team and Sebago team. The Royal team has been focusing on water and all that comes with it. They're learning about water sheds and having even been able to interact with the cobass watershed to learn even more. They've also been learning about the access to clean water and what needs to happen to filter it. They've gone to a lab to make mini reverse osmosis filters, and they're also learning about the different climates and landforms and where they show up around the world. For the literacy class, we're writing about narrative stories about an experience in our life. Math is being done by grade level, where students have been learning about ratios, functions, integers, and functions. Off-team, we've been participating in technology and coding class using code.org, where they have learned about computer programming and its importance, as well as making their own special codes. The UA Royal has taken part in this quarter is art, where kids have been able to express themselves in self-portraits, showing their face on one side and their passions on the other side, as well as clay relief tiles, Halloween drawings, and neurographic art. On Sebago, they've been participating in book clubs, the books including A Long Walk to Water and Surviving the Apple Whites. Sebago is also participating in a team-based coding class and continuing with grade-level math curricula. Their current hands-on learning has been around design, and the platform is through string art. They're producing some awesome stuff. They're also writing about sharing some creepy haunted Halloween stories that are to be performed at an open-mic day focused on public speaking. And that is all.
Thank you very much, Rocco. Moving on to the high school. Claire Holman?
So I'll speak first about some school senate stuff that we've been having. We meet every Thursday during our lunch period, and it's over Zoom. So Health Center has been working on a survey that they sent out for those students on mental health and workloads from teachers, and they've also been partnering, they've been speaking about partnering with NAMI's Suicide Prevention Program. School Spirit Committee has been planning for winter carnival, and we are speaking of, we're speaking of having it in the spring rather than in the winter this year to limit some coronavirus stuff. Outreach Committee has gone through with their Make a Difference Week. We aren't quite sure on the results from the high school yet, but it was all online this year with one drop-off box outside of the office in the high school. We're also, Outreach Committee is also talking to school nurses throughout the community to possibly help with holiday and gift baskets that we often do during the holiday season. Student Voice worked on our dress-up days during Halloween week and are also working on a winter sports kickoff bonfire. Our current date is November 13th, but we're finding chaperones and working on getting a burn permit. And Sustainability Committee is working on a safe way to complete the mural that we started last year and also worked with Student Voice upon the mock election that we had.
Very good.
I'm just gonna address some of this other school stuff that's happening in school, and some of our sport seasons, which have continued, although they've definitely been slightly different this year. But yeah, so today, the cross-country meet had a, the cross-country team had a home race, which the girls team won, so that was exciting, and they are still scheduled to go to states two weeks from now. And the girls soccer team has continued, continued playing this throughout the season and has an undefeated season, which is really exciting. And boys soccer has continued playing as well. Varsity Field Hockey just finished their season with five wins and only one loss, and the football team was also able to continue playing with some new different restrictions, and I believe it was two-touch only. An exciting, exciting new thing is that our, we have a school play that was just written by four students, and we're looking into ways to cast that and have that performed in a safe, safe manner and seeing how that can work out. Our math meets have also continued online with other schools in the area, and I think that's just an interesting, interesting way to see how we can keep, keep being involved in different communities and schools online. In the school, we have had no via testing and the SATs over the past month, and we, we did just have our day of welcome as well, which was an exciting way to kind of remind people, this is Marana Cook, and we're all welcome here, especially in a school year that's a little different. I think a lot of people wore black and gold, and there were signs up around the school that encouraged just welcoming everybody. Our first quarter also ends this week. The high school's on a quarter schedule now, so I believe all our classes will shift starting next Monday to being Gold Day classes. Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's the highlights so far. I think it's been going pretty well. It's definitely been an adjustment, but most people seem like they're pretty positive about it all, so yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Citizens comments? You're none. Do we have citizens?
Diane, do you want to check online before we leave? See if...
Sounds good. Adjustments to the agenda by the board and the superintendent?
I have none today.
I don't, hi, can you guys hear me? I don't have an adjustment, but I just want to say to Claire and Morgan and Rocco and Cooper and Emma that it was awesome to just hear all of the amazing stuff that's happening despite the fact that this year is so weird and how so many different groups of students are doing wonderful things to adjust to COVID and COVID restrictions, and I missed hearing from you, so that was really great. Thank all of you.
Thank you, Patty. Staff Association report.
Don't think there's anyone here from the association unless they're online.
A-team reports.
So this week, oh, I'm gonna take this off just, so for this particular month, I know last meeting, there was some questions around the lunchtime schedule and what that looked like. So I asked the A-team to kind of write a group report, so all the principals and Ryan kind of got together and talked about the lunchtime and then kind of put it down on paper, and we included some photos because we thought that would be helpful to kind of be able to kind of picture what's going on. So there, I just kind of said, let's talk about that if there's any questions, so that's how they wrote their report, but they're all certainly here and can answer any questions individually about what may be going on in their schools around how lunches and the lunchtimes run. So I know there was a lot of information there, but they're also available for questions. I just told them to be prepared for that, so.
I think it's good for our local people to see what's, all the work that has to go into this. Fantastic report. Any other comments?
I do have a question, Gary.
Yep.
My kind of question kind of goes out to any of the principals. Which part of the hybrid model is most difficult to navigate? I mean, reading your report, I can see that it's, you guys kind of very well articulated the line schedule, but kind of a general question, which part of the hybrid model is most difficult to navigate?
Does anyone want to try to tackle that question? Thank you, Janet.
Hi, everybody. I'm speaking for the community. I think you would agree that my state of the law is that we deserve the recognition of each or every one of you, because we need to, but it's a legal requirement, they want us, they want us to know, we are ready to stay for, like, in a way, why we should restore the assistance, and so, so I just think it's a different way of operating, and it's an everyday focus of the name to be in that level, and, and doing their very best to give what students need academically and socially in the condensed time, but we also know this is what, the students are making it, they're doing a amazing job, but they're, but I want to, I mean, that's with, because they too are, this is a different way of thinking and running and working together, so it just takes a constant pressure to be on, be focused, and I think that's the biggest challenge. They're probably gonna really hope you answer, oh, you're, what do you want to be more specific, but I need that being a picture, I'm keeping all those things in check.
Go ahead, Geth.
So I just want to say that this, this report that you guys did was amazing. When I was reading it, it was like, this was so much information, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure that we really needed all that information, or that the time that it took to, for you to put all that information together for, I mean, I think it's great that we know it and we see it, but it felt to me like we were trying to micromanage what's going on by getting all of this information and asking them to take all that time, because it must have taken a lot of time for them to do that, so that we could have this information when, I think, a lot briefer report, which didn't take away from other important work that the administrators have to do, would have been just as helpful, but I really do appreciate this. And like I said, I was, as I was reading it, I just kept like shaking my head thinking, oh my goodness, this must have taken so much time, so thank you.
No further comments? Adult and Community Education?
Steve, is there anything you'd like to share today?
Yeah, I think I'm, this is normal, one of the elections, but, no, no, that is, it's going really well, our CBL program is coming to the nation for all this, classroom hours, we start driving very soon. We currently have four high-tech students, which I met with the other night, who are parenting, representing their high-tech.
Oh, yeah.
And one of the biggest things we're doing right now is, obviously, it's a huge transition for us to navigate to offer face-to-face enrichment classes. It's one of the things we really enjoy offering to our primary communities, and we're happy and fortunate to have any classes face-to-face here in the evening. So what we're doing, if we're transitioning to doing more online classes, and obviously, this is a huge learning curve for us, it's not something that we've normally done. So we've actually started recruiting individuals who are looking into two classes. We have some main-based people who are looking to do things like offering the introduction to beekeeping online, raising chickens, and some other kind of fun that you should be able to do, and to encourage more people, some of our previous people who did some classes with us, to not get embraced online learning. One of the things that's really hard to do is to actually, is this a pay-stake, it's somebody who wanted to offer an online class without providing support. So we've actually, we're working with a company called Boomer Tech to provide training to these people, so they learn how to do Zoom, they learn how to group classroom, and we done all this online environment, and then we support it by them if they have questions or ask for questions, that's probably, they kind of help them along to be able to offer these classes. So we offered twenty online classes this past semester, and we're really hoping for the winter starting semester to offer more. Really trying to embrace that online environment. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you. So we got the finance bit.
Yep. So, so Bridgette is not here tonight, but on page 11 is the, kind of her annual report or monthly report, and you'll see the percent remaining is kind of balanced out again as to where we would expect it to be right around this time of year. So I know there was a few concerns around facilities and maintenance, and they've done a lot of work, but you will notice it's kind of balanced out, it's right where it should be this time of year, so.
So you're satisfied?
I'm satisfied right now.
We're not gonna run out of money.
Not yet.
Health Center Director.
So again, that's on page 12, that would be Rebecca Reynolds. Please, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at her report there, one of the highlights is that we were able to secure Dr. Seewell for expanded services on Mondays and Fridays, which is one of the requirements of having the health center. So she worked really hard over the, about the last month and a half, because things were in such flux, but she was able to secure that, and we're in a good place. And on the backside, on page 13, it kind of explains the, what the health center does, so.
There's nothing that it doesn't do.
Right, that's right. Feel free to pass it along to anyone, because the doors are open and they're doing fantastic work there, so.
Special education.
And Ryan, or excuse me, Mr. Mazerve, actually helped write the principal report this week, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Curriculum is, she's not here?
And I don't think she's here either, but again, that's on page 14 and 15.
And then we come up to the superintendent.
And then my, my report where I basically talked about the goals that we've set as an administrative team, and the other thing that I wanted to draw your attention to was from here on out, I will by month report out on truancy. So at this point, you can see that there's two middle school and eight high school, and we've got plans in place for all of those people, so we're right on track kind of to where we should be in terms of offering support to these students that need it, because obviously if you're truant, there's something going on, so we're trying to build plans to support them and get them back in school. So I know Dr. Conway doesn't usually have to have meetings like this that soon, so this was a little bit new this year, of course, Betty.
Have you, have you found out what the reasons are for the large number of students in the, in the high school who are truant? Are they just not attending? Are they not able to attend remotely? Are they missing the time to check in?
I think I can say safely that a lot of it's about engagement and trying to get them engaged in school, because a lot of them are, were working or had signed up to be remote students, and it just took them a while to kind of get into the groove and get started. So kind of what Steve talked about, when people are working remote, you need to give them a little bit extra support to kind of get those patterns established. So a good part of it was about engagement, those students, engaging those students that were remote and helping them build that sustainability to be able to participate.
How is attendance taken? Do they have, do students have to check in at a specific time?
Yes. Dr. Conway, do you mind coming up? And I'll let him speak to that, if that's okay? Thank you, Dr. Conway.
Sure. So attendance at high school level is always pretty in-depth. We're helping, and it's each class period where, case the rate is done in the morning, what we have to do continuously throughout the day, if a student gives attention to fifty percent of their classes for the day, they're considered active by a case standard. So right now, they're, I hope that students are signing in for the start of the class, you know, the longer they're, start, previous that, or start, like, start, wait until it starts, get there, early. They have to sign in to Google Passo, and there's a check-in form, often, comments with their comment, any questions, or FDL days question, and that's, that's our attendance and teachers record that information, how the school, who you're back in.
How is that working? Are kids, are kids check, able to check in every period? Are they able to check in at the specific times?
Yeah, so our, I think I put it in the board before, last time, the last time we met, they didn't do it, you know, all of the day, but it was, it was right around ninety-five percent, so it's too high level, and it's right around their ten historically, so they're able to do it. It is definitely under mode, and I, a lot of students, you know, for, for, and a lot of teachers, really, pretty effort that they're, and be on this app for, like, exams at all. And, 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 all that stuff, that's, that's good in my, in my.
I, I bet, and I guess, I don't know about the five percent who are not making it on time and what the reasons are. I guess, I just want, when you're working remotely at home... I guess, I just want, when you're working remotely at home, well, let me read what I wrote. "I'd like to caution staff to expect remote students to check in at a specific time or to complete instruction in a, in a specific order. Remote students may not always be able to do this, depending on living situations. There needs to be some flexibility built in so that students can complete work whenever home situations allow this." And so, I'm, I'm living this. And so I know how difficult it can be to, to check in at a specific time. And if you're not there, you're given a zero for the class. And, or you're, you are marked down a specific amount, 1/3, for example, because you didn't check in at 9:30 sharp. And so, I hope that's not happening. And if it is happening, I hope that there is some, some way to check in with those kids to make sure it's not a home situation, like mom and dad have taken over my workspace for their workspace at, on that particular day, or, you know, whatever. There's so many different reasons why it can be difficult on the kids.
So the way I can add to that, a point that's spot on is, instead of, I know the, it's a down thing, you know, all the way across to making sure we're being lenient enough to.
I know.
Supporting engagement, so you can check in, you know, us checking in with each other. Are we letting you go, or are we not checking up? We want to make sure that there's enough support under hope, and this is the expectation, that nobody's created as being dark, they're late to class. That's, that's a different.
Habits of mind?
Habits of work, would be.
Habits of work, yeah.
That's a behavior that, you know, that we're, but it shouldn't impact our academics or.
Okay. Okay. So, Dwayne, just along those same lines, I'm just wondering if the teachers feel that they can be flexible with some of those issues? Because living where I live in Mount Vernon, my internet is very spotty. And I know there's a lot of kids around me who have the same thing, who have been unable on many, many times to check in on Google Classroom. And does that automatically set off the phone call to the parents that their student isn't there? Or, you know, what, and I just, I'm concerned that, I don't want teachers to feel like they have to do the 9:30 every single time. And do they feel that it's okay to be flexible and to be lenient? Or are they feeling like they're being really held with their feet right to the fire?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can be sure, like, you know, after you sort of, I, I need to be able to have flexibility, and I know that you to assess the situation. We talked to the staff, you know, if you get suspended in an hour, it was like, maybe agree now about our, you know, how are we going to do this? You know, how, how can we best support kids? And this is the, the ways we came up with. They have a vacancy to, to run that, how, how they're being running it. They don't report the attendance until later in the day in our school. And a call doesn't go home until at least 2:30 is when it goes home. So they're not wanting to go home after each class or anything like that. We wait for attendance to be reconciled at the end of the day, and the teacher to adjust it, how they want to adjust it, to make sure it's on, on their classroom engagement. And then I call those home based on that.
Thank you.
And I, I know they're, they're working right, and we are, students are a little bit sad.
Dr. Conway, correct me if I'm wrong, like a situation like you just described, Kathy, that would be something that we probably would see an advisor getting involved with, so that way they could help advocate for that student. And I do know that has already happened a couple of times. Correct me if I'm wrong again, but that's like the support network that we have within Miranda Cook, that advisee system, really helps kind of spot those problems. And, you know, the teachers have done a really good job with that of, of helping advocate. That's part of what an advisor does, is help to advocate. You know this, I'm preaching to the choir, I'm sorry, Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have meeting, which are listed.
Yep. So the curriculum minutes are actually in the folder that's on your table, folks. And we remember to do it for this meeting. Patty Gordon agreed to give a brief report out after curriculum meetings. Patty, I don't know if you're prepared, I know you're online. I don't know if you're prepared to be able to do that.
Before she does that, is there, is there a page missing here? Because it says, number two, weighted grade discussion. And then what are the advantages, disadvantages of weighted grades? And on the back, there's no discussion on that.
I will, I think there's probably a piece missing there, because we did have a really good conversation about that, so I will check with Dr. Harriman, and we'll get that amended.
Okay. It exists in the email that has the minutes, so it must have just been a copying error or something like that.
Yeah.
Yep. So at this meeting on the 28th, we reviewed our roles and responsibilities as curriculum committee members and talked a little bit about what has happened in the past and how we will structure the meetings in the, this year. We talked about the, the way we're going to look at, oh, no, sorry, that's policy, never mind. We, but we did talk about roles and responsibilities. We had this awesome weighted grade response, conversation, and talked a lot about pros and cons of weighted grades, and referred to examples and research that Dr. Harriman included in our curriculum committee packet, and decided in the end, as you see in the minutes, that the question was just to kind of check and adjust and see what we needed, if we needed to adjust. And we decided, the group there decided that we didn't need to do anything different than what we were doing now, and it seemed like it was going all right. And we talked about upcoming meetings where we would look at the K through 12 visual performing arts curriculum, and then also, in the wintertime, sometime, look at the K through 5 math pilot. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we have, policies.
So I know dropout prevention actually happened just a little while ago, so the, the minutes aren't out yet. I know, I believe David attends that. I don't know if you'd like to talk about it at all, or if you're, I don't want to put you on the spot here, because I know you just had it.
But I just made it here. I was working up in Newport, and so I apologized. I wasn't able to make.
Oh, no worries. Dr. Conway, did you want to talk briefly about the meeting? I know you just had it.
Yeah, just. And that being, and we came here, we had members from the health center, that is our alternative program, middle school, special education, administrators, T-Maxx and myself. We went over the dropout prevention plan, which is a pretty in-depth plan that identifies the supports that we have, that Mrs. Schreit talked about earlier, the Bible program, numerous other, other support interventions. We have, we talked about next steps, I mean, submit those minutes to the next.
Yep, perfect. Thank you, Dr. Conway.
Can I just, quick question, any idea how, anybody? How are, like that grid that we were just looking at, and I guess I'm a little slow in asking the question, but how we compare to other places in the area? Or we, or do we even bother to look at that?
I'll be honest in saying I've never done any research with that, but I can look into it if you're curious.
Just curious.
Okay.
So, facilities, you had a meeting?
Yeah. So facilities and transportation, we forgot to name a spokesperson for the board, so I don't know if there's anyone who's on that committee that would like to briefly report out, or I can just give you a quick rundown, whatever.
The big thing that's missing in this whole thing is the bed, with the lights on the field.
Right.
That wasn't listed here.
Oh, under.
Like four.
Number four. Remember, that's going to be done in the spring. We have the lights.
You still need to get the bed out.
We, yeah, I'll talk to Sean about that, Sean and Bridgette about that, so.
Putting it off, and then you're going to have a price, it's going to have next year's cost.
Yeah.
And you're not going to have the money. That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah. All right, I will talk to Sean about that for sure, so. But we did review the CRF-1, CRF-2 grants, and then Sean gave us a brief update on the summer work that he had completed, so. That was one of the fastest facility meetings I've had in my time here.
But we did talk about those lights.
Lights, yep.
So then?
So then next is, yeah.
You haven't had the rest.
Yeah, yep. And then we did have a policy meeting, it's on the back on page 19. It's on the back of the facility minutes. And I believe, Patty, we had nominated you for that as well, am I correct?
I don't think so, but.
No?
I don't think we nominated anyone, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, am I remembering correctly? But I can say what happened, if.
Number three says we did not identify.
We did not, that's what it was, and we would, we would come, we would come up with a board reporter at the next meeting, so we will have one for December. I don't know why I wrote Patty's name with a question mark at the top of the paper. So we did, again, we reviewed the purpose of the policy committee, and then we talked about the rotation for review of policies. And then we came up with a schedule, and as you can see on our agenda, that meeting is coming up on this, the next meeting will be coming up on the 17th. And then you will, guys will very shortly start to see some first reads coming through, so.
Next board meeting, you'll have first read.
Yep.
Now, we're going to try to get 15 policies every time we move. We're going to be busy. There's all the things that have changed. I'll see there, yep, you don't have that yet, so.
I move to approve the minutes of October 21st, 2020.
Second.
Okay, so very quickly, Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dean is not here. Kathy?
Abstain.
Melissa's not here. Alex?
Yay.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Abstain.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
So eight yes and two abstain.
I move to accept the donations.
Second.
Any discussion?
Kim?
Absolutely.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
So unanimous.
I move to approve the support system certification handbook revisions.
Second.
So just to give you, I talked to Jay about this, this is state issue. All these changes that are being made, have done by the state.
So the DOE has put out, they're, they're kind of trying to align certification committees across the state, so they put out some guidance, and that's why you see the revisions that you see there. Obviously, they've reduced the, some of the workload considerably. And then there's some, like, they had put in here, there's a few areas in red that they put in, and that is to help clarify kind of what's being asked of the teachers for certification purposes. So pretty much driven by directives from the Department of Education in this particular case.
Any further discussion?
Kim?
Sure.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
And it is unanimous.
Can I say something super quick?
Of course.
Um, I just need to give kudos and shout out to Leslie Boyce and Tony Parker, because having once been on the certification committee, there is so much work that these people do, and we are so lucky in our district to have, making it all happen for all of the staff in our district. And so, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
I move to revise the 2020, 2021 school calendar as proposed by the superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Kim, sorry, should know that by now.
Yes. Sorry, I got through most of it, but once I saw the crossouts of the first one, I stopped and didn't realize there was another page, so I didn't get, sorry, yes.
Oh, good. Wendy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Again, unanimous.
I move, sorry, this should have been done in the discussion part. But since I'm first, I feel like I shouldn't be penalized, because I first all the time. We need to start going backwards, hypothetically, every now and again. If we were to resume regular schedule sometime before the end of the year, are these going to?
No, I'm not, they're just going away, yeah.
Sorry, late for the girl.
Good question.
I move to accept the teacher resignation effective 11/27/20. A Wayne Elementary School teacher, Ross.
Chaconi.
Chaconi?
Yep.
Okay, with regret.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Kim?
Sad, but yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Again, unanimous. Thank you.
So now we're up to discussion, which happened on the MSBA, which I found kind of interesting.
Yeah. So they did their, there was a virtual conference, and I think it was new for everyone that did that. So we talked a little bit about the people that attended, just briefly sharing one session or, or a highlight from the committee, so I don't want to steal anyone's airtime, so I'm going to let the board go first here, whoever would like to be the first one to go. Looks like Kathy's.
I can go first, because I first want to say, thanks for letting me be the delegate, because the delegate assembly was five and a half hours. It was the longest one they've ever had, and it was brutal, so thank you. But anyway.
Was that on Saturday, too?
It was brutal.
Was it Saturday or Friday?
It was Friday.
Friday, Saturday, five and a half hours.
It was 3:30 to 9:00. Thank you for doing that, for persevering. Well, and there was, I mean, it was great discussion, and a lot of it was because they hadn't done the Zoom before, and trying to get all the different recommendations and the changes, and people, it was, it was crazy. But anyway, as far as all the resolutions, all of them were passed. recommendations and the changes and people, it was, it was crazy. But anyway, as far as all the resolutions, all of them were passed mostly as written. The one about, and I don't know the exact wording, but the one about the equity and all of the things that were involved in that, they did add, which I was really glad, they did add one group of, one group to the group that they were talking about, and that was the socioeconomic status. So they added that, and that was a unanimous vote. So it was very interesting, lots of great conversation. Overall, the conference was awesome. At first, I thought, oh, all day Friday and Saturday morning, Zoom, it's gonna be kind of long. But it, I mean, it went by really fast, and the sessions were incredible. The keynote speaker at the beginning actually brought tears to my eyes. It was, he was just so moving. He was talking about mental health and the mental health of our students and our staff and our community, and how important it is to really pay attention to the mental health of the people around us. And his story was a personal one of his own son. He was a Supreme Court Justice for New Hampshire, and his story was heartbreaking. But anyway, it was, it kind of set the stage for the whole conference because a lot of the sessions dealt with, you know, what can we do to support everybody during this pandemic? And one of the things, one of the sessions that I went to, the first one I went to, is probably the best one I went to, was advanced board development. So it was about, you know, how to really, as a board, work as a team, and how important that is to work for a team, as a team, so that you're supporting all the kids in your district. And they went, actually, the whole presentation is taped, and I have it here, and I think it would be awesome for all of this board to see it and go through it. It really, it had a lot of really good information. And one of the things that really stuck out for me was it, they said several times that, number one, the culture of the district really starts at the board level. And we are role models for the district, and however the, however we play out as board members plays out across the whole district as far as the culture goes, and how important it is to really have a unity of purpose. And in order to do that, the board needs to take time for themselves. So they suggested a retreat or something that you can, that we can really work on being a team together. I thought that was a really great idea. And the other thing that they really suggested very strongly was that the board continue to have and participate in professional development, and to really be, again, role models for our district as we learn more and more about how to be an effective board and about education. And Rebecca went to this. Rebecca, feel free to chime in anytime. And the last thing was about doing a self-evaluation, and we have talked about that quite a bit, but they said, you know, that's a really important thing to do. And there's, they gave examples of a lot of boards do every meeting. There's five questions that they go through at the end of every meeting, and they just kind of reflect on how the meeting went, and there's lots of resources that they have. There's actually a book coming out called Key, The Keywords Book for Boards that has a lot of these self-evaluations in it that might really be worth getting and looking at. So that was one that was really good. I went to quite a few on innovative thinking, which I think Jay's gonna talk about, but they're, the ones I went to mostly were about resources. There's so many resources through the DOE that we can get for no cost to really start to look at how we can use what's happening across the country right now in education to really improve education in general, even after the pandemic's over. So it was, you know, there's lots, I've got pages of resources. If anybody wants to take a look at them, I'd be happy to share them. And the other one I went to that I thought was pretty interesting was the First Amendment Challenges in 2020. And that was about free speech for staff and students. And the key thing I took away from that was that the main check is that if the material will cause substantial interference with the schoolwork or with the discipline in the school, then it fall, you know, it doesn't fall under that. And that teachers, actually, this kind of surprised me a little bit. I wasn't always a hundred percent sure of this, but teachers are not protected by the First Amendment when they are in their teaching capacity. They are in their own personal lives outside of school, but they're not protected under the First Amendment when they're in their official role as a teacher. That was interesting. At least that's what this guy said. And there was also a question about, do we have a controversial issues policy? I don't know if we do or not. I don't know if I've ever seen one. But I'm not, I couldn't remember that one, so. I remember that we did way back when I was.
I don't remember.
Way back in history. Yeah. And then, oh, there's one other thing I wanted to say back about the, the board development was that one thing that they kept saying over and over is that one board member shouldn't be directing what the superintendent does. So I was thinking about that when I was looking at this, this report on the lunch and all that stuff. If I wanted to know all that information that you gave us about the lunch, and I asked you to get it, Jay, but no one else cared about getting it, then you don't have to do it. Because if it just comes from one person, it's not a board. They kept going back to saying that it's a board, it's coming from the board. It shouldn't be coming from one person. If the board said, oh, yeah, we'd like to know that, and, you know, three or four people wanted to say. But if it's just me saying, I want that information, Jay's like, mm, don't have to do that. So it has to really come as a board. They emphasized so much how important it is to be a full team board. And, oh, I also went to the overview of the revised main learning results, which I think would be really good for the curriculum committee to take a look at, because it's English, Language Arts, Math, and LCR, which is Life and Career Ready Curriculum Revision, so. And that's it. Oh, and the end, the end note speaker on Saturday was also very moving. He talked a lot about racial justice in our schools, and the thing that really stuck with me was like, you know, I always used to think, yeah, that's really important, but we don't really have that, you know, much racial diversity in our school. But he kept saying, he was from New Hampshire, and he kept saying, it doesn't matter if you have racial diversity in your school or not, you still need to address these issues because you still have groups within your school that are marginalized, whether it's socioeconomic, whatever it might be. The things that you would do to address racial injustices fit right across the board to all the groups that are marginalized. And that made me really stop to think about, you know, there are groups in our district that are marginalized, and we really want to think that there aren't, but there are. So I think it's something that we should really look at seriously. So anyway, it was a great experience, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to go, and I've got lots of resources if anybody's interested.
I know Rebecca's online. I don't know if Rebecca, if you'd like to talk about anything from the conference?
Well, I think Kathy did a great job on the advanced board development one. That was a great session. And they did talk about a board self-evaluation, and I think a board retreat would be a good idea, even if we just watched that video that Kathy was talking about, and then just talked about how we are as a board and maybe some goals that we have and where we'd like to see the board be in the future, because we've got some tough times coming up, so, and I'm sure there's gonna be tough decisions. So I would really, I support definitely trying to come up with a date that we could do something like that. Another session that I attended was conducting superintendent searches, which I hope we don't ever have to do. But in the event that we do, it was actually a really good session, and it just broke it down on, on how to go about doing a search of that, of the next person that's gonna lead your district. And I think it would also, you know, transfer to when you're hiring a principal or stuff like that. It was, it was really interesting session. But, and I too really appreciate the opportunity to go because I learned a lot, and it was really interesting. I had fun.
Thank you. Wendy, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I, I learned a lot, had a really great time. I was really moved by John T. Broderick, who, Junior, who was the judge who spoke about mental illness. Here, let me take this thing off. He spoke about mental illness, and it really segued into one of the workshops I went to, Supporting Suicide Prevention and Resilience During COVID, School Learning Collaboratives, and the presenter was Greg Marley. He's the Clinical Director of NAMI Maine, which stands for National Alliance of Mental Illness. And it was, he talked, it was talking about the law, the suicide training mandate from the state of Maine, and Maine state law recommends but does not mandate that all schools need suicide prevention and intervention training, also called gatekeeping training, and we do have that. We are doing the Gatekeeper Training Program. I called today and just double confirmed, confirmed that was it. And so he went over the things that, that the schools needed to do, but also about the warning signs for the kids, and that kind of also blended in with the opening speaker, too, talking about the five signs of, which, I have a flyer here if anyone wants to look at it. Mental illness, not feeling like yourself, feeling agitated, and saying that the time of COVID, not only are students at risk, but are teachers and all the people who work at the schools, the parents, the families. So one in four Mainers are impacted by mental illness. Suicide is the ninth leading cause of death in Maine, and the rates of suicide attempt and death by suicide have risen among school-aged youth. So he gave us a lot of statistics, too, and it just, it blended together as something that we really need to watch for and take seriously and be supportive of our teachers, administrators, and students and families right this time, since it's so stressful and we don't know what's gonna happen next, so.
I'm on holiday, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, suicide was mentioned that it was more than double the state of Maine, I'm ready. That's how bad it is. I went to the meeting also. Some of the things I got out of it, the SATs are not gonna be funded by the state anymore. And somehow, I just thought about that process, because the SATs are very important if you go to college. In the old days, I don't know if they still have it, but when you go into the service, they give you an IQ test. Somehow we need to come up with some type of help, people that need to be in, work with their hands and mechanical things, so we don't waste their time and move them along as far as I'm concerned. Because it really, even when you go to the work for the phone company, there's one person that goes out for the phone company that doesn't get an IQ test. And they can determine what you should be and what the partner should be doing. So what I found is that, I went to this thing called Meet the Commissioner. I felt.
I went to that one, too.
I felt very, like, we need a stronger commissioner. That's how I felt, because she wouldn't, didn't want to answer any real questions, is what happened. Questions came from the floor, and she sort of just pawned them off. You're out there, as far as I'm concerned, walking out of your home. The sessions that I noticed is that they, I was talking to an attorney about the time, and attorneys have one idea in their mind, where's the money?
I was thinking, Gary.
You know, so do I, you know, but. And it was this, I don't know. And when I sat in the negotiations a couple times here, I listened to him, and I'm saying, you can't make a decision either, one way or the other. But they're also said that ten days language for flex, extra time off was discussed, and it's sort of like being pushed everywhere throughout the state of Maine. I'm saying, you already got ten days, now you're gonna go for twenty. That's almost a month's worth of work this year. I don't, I don't know how the state's gonna, and they're, she already said, she, where do you come out with the actual amount? The budget's gonna go down, because we're still working on it, but it's gonna be down. But she made it very clear that the budget will not be what it was this year, and it's only going negative. So that's about the big thing that I got.
Was there any positive news, Jerry?
From her? No, I didn't hear one big positive.
All right.
The tenant, oh, yeah, she did, the student count that we go on for the, our funding has been delayed by thirty days to help get all the programs up and running. And I'm saying, we have a generation of kids that are gonna be way behind. I just, I feel sorry for them. I think we need to get back to school and open them up now. So that was a big thing.
Go ahead, Jay.
Oh, and I guess I'm last here. So I did some of the same ones that were already mentioned. I sat in on a couple of those. I'll just talk briefly about a couple. One was innovative thinking. It was actually put on by the Executive Director of the MPA, and she talked about innovative thinking, the types of innovative thinking, where, you know, what, what your type of innovative thinking might be. And then she walked us through kind of a, an exercise, I guess is what I would call it, on how to attack a problem. And it was a really unique approach to it that I thought was almost immediately applicable to almost any team and any decision-making process, that you might have to do some out-of-the-box thinking. It just forces you to, instead of being superficial, you kind of have to go deeper and ask the hard questions. But by getting different types of thinkers, like the developer, the implementer, the clarify, the ideator, you can kind of dig into that. And when you're done, you have this large kind of web created that actually has probably some viable options for thinking kind of outside the box. I really enjoyed that session because it was very different from a lot of the other sessions that, that I had sat in on. And that one was Friday afternoon, and I thought she did a really good job with that, considering it was virtual as well. And one that I went to on Saturday that kind of affirmed what we're doing here was best practices for managing remote board meetings. And we're doing really, really well, especially based on some of the questions that I sat in on. I was just like, wow, we've really done a good job of kind of getting in front of it and getting us to a place where we're able to have these kind of meetings. So knowing that we can pretty facilitate an in-person and a remote meeting, and we're doing it, I think, pretty well. We are ahead of the curve, and we're doing things right. And it was a lawyer that was presenting. So a lot of the things that we do with the roll call vote, et cetera, we're doing right. So it was kind of affirming. I'm not gonna say I learned anything new, but it was very affirming to know, hey, we're actually doing something right here when it comes to at least board, remote board meetings. So that was a good feeling. So those were kind of the two that, there were others, and they've already kind of been mentioned. But it was, it was certainly an interesting approach. When I first started, I was kind of like, ooh, what's this gonna look like? But the sessions went by surprisingly much quicker than I expected them to, so it was good. So, and I'm really glad I did that innovative thinking one, because that's something I'll be bringing to the A-team. It's nice when you can bring something and actually use something. So we will be bringing it to the A-team and using that process.
We used a program that was called.
Yep.
And I'm saying, I had so much difficulty with it, and it wasn't for God's sake where they never got out. She goes, whoa, is not. Because Huma is not in my.
So, and again, thank you for, to everyone who went, because it's really nice when we go to that. And I know this time, sorry, I know this time was a little different, but they were showing where people were from, and we had a really good team, because you could see it, there was ways in the app, you could see it, and online you could see it. And we did really well, we had really good representation there. So I appreciate everyone that had the ability to be able to go to it and participated, because it is, there are some really good things you learn from those sessions, so. So, thank you. Oh, Patty?
Thank you, guys. It sounds really interesting, and I just want to echo what I heard several people say from hearing things in the sessions that they were in that we could use as a board to make ourselves more effective, and wondering what next steps we need to take to make that happen. So I heard people talking about sessions where they talked about a board retreat of some kind, where we could talk about developing ourselves further as a team, maybe using the video Kathy talked about, or the book Kathy talked about. I heard about self-evaluation, which I know we have, and we didn't, we decided in COVID not to use it, but I don't remember if we made a plan of how we would now, like, we didn't use it at the end of last year, but did we make a plan for how we would use it in the future? And if not, it seems like we need to. Racial justice and the decision-making thing you said about out-of-the-box thinking, it sounds like that would be great for not only the A-team, but for us. And I wonder what steps we could take to, or how we can kind of, for those of us who didn't get to go to those sessions, how we can make that work for all of us, you know, like, what do we do next?
So I, I think that we should seriously think about setting some time aside to do some kind of a retreat. And I realize that when we all get together, it has to be public. And it can be public, but no one's going to attend. And that's what they told, that's what they said, yes, it has to be public, but most of the time, there aren't any people that really want to know what you're doing at your retreat, so.
They said, bring a couple sandwiches in case someone shows up.
Yeah. And I, I do think, though, there's something about you can do a self-evaluation in an executive session, I'm not sure, but I think that that's, that's true. But I think, I agree with you, Patty, I think we need, we've talked about it, but I think we need to take action now. And I think, I, I really think a retreat would be, and, and if we did a retreat, then we could talk about all these other things. Like, I went to the same session that Jay was talking about, about the innovative thinking. And the process was incredible. I was thinking about this board during the whole time, about how we could, well, some of the issues that we face, we could really use that process to get to some solutions. So that would be my suggestion, but I don't know what other folks think.
How would we go about scheduling a board retreat?
I'm all for having a board retreat, too. I wanted one a couple years ago. I think when Jay got here, we were talking about doing board retreats and went to a couple, what was it, board sessions through, through the years, and they seemed to be really helpful and really good ideas, but they are public meetings. And they always say, you know, if you have a lunch, just have a few more sandwiches on the side in case somebody decides to come, because they are open to the public. But just prepare for that, but mostly people don't come.
So it sounds like there would be general agreement. What I could do to get this process started is float some dates. I can sit with Gary, we can take a look at the calendar, and then float some dates and times out to people. And then from there, we can create, obviously, once we have a date and time, then we can create the agenda and move forward from there. So I too like the idea of doing that, and I think it's just a matter of getting it scheduled as part of what we do. I would recommend we try to do it before budget season, just because the budget season becomes kind of all-consuming, and that's all we really see. So if we could get something, we only have one board meeting scheduled in the month of December, and I know, again, that's a little bit of a tough time, but again, we might be able to pull something together. So if that works for the board, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'd be more than willing to try to get some dates out there, see how many people we could get to attend, and then kind of work from there.
So I just want to make sure that all the board members are in agreement before we move ahead with this. So if we could just maybe do a thumbs up or something like that, I just want to make sure everyone's voice is being heard.
Yes.
I guess are people willing to participate in a retreat? I guess that's the question.
That'd be a Christmas retreat. The good thing about the Hoover app.
I believe that a good school had all those four students.
Just one other thing is we, when I was a principal here at middle school, there was, the board did a retreat every year, so it's not something that's new, so it's been done in the past.
One thing about the Hoover app, and Kathy mentioned watching the session that you went to, those pre-recorded sessions, because I actually didn't go to that one live, but I had a break, believe it or not, on my Saturday morning and my second cup of coffee. I was like, eh, I might as well watch a recorded session, so I ended up being able to still watch that one. Do you know how long they're available for?
I saw somewhere.
Yeah, I vaguely recall.
It's like a month or something like that. I can look back and find out, but it's, they'll be available for a little while. Do you know, Jay?
I, I believe it was through November, I want to say, like, it's the 13th or 15th, some weird date like that. But I'm sure if I reach out to Eileen King, because I know other people have reached out and said, is it possible to show this video? And she was looking into that. So I'll get her name on the list and, and see if we can get that, those videos, because I think that's a great idea.
And some of the, I thought they said the live cast, whatever it's called, those were supposed to be available at some point, too. And I looked before this meeting, and they still weren't. So I don't know how we would go about, tech people, keeping those things, because Kathy mentioned the closing speaker, and there were several that were really good, or the opening speaker, who I, that was the second time I had seen him. And some of the resources, there were a ton of resources, I think, with every, like, links all over the place. And I, I don't know if it's possible to somehow retain some of that information that we might be able to look at.
I'll talk to Diane, and we'll see what magic.
I, I actually, I downloaded a lot of the PowerPoints with all of the live links on them. So all the sessions that I went to, I have all of the PowerPoints that have all of the resources. So if we can't get them any other way, I've got them on my computer, so. So can I say one more thing, Gary, before we close? Thank you. I just, I've been thinking about this conference ever since Friday, and just about the whole mental health issue. And I got a letter today from a, a staff member who was expressing some concerns and some worries about the stress level that teachers are under right now. And I've just been thinking about what we can do to help support teachers, because we know that when teachers are under a lot of stress, and they are under a lot of stress right now, they're working so hard. And we know it, and I want them to know that we know it, and we support them, and we care about them. And I just wonder what we can do as a board so that they really believe that. And it goes right back to that whole mental health and the stress, and, and that filters down to the kids, because I'm seeing kids under an incredible lot of, a lot of stress right now as well. Kids of all ages that I, that I interact with on a pretty regular basis are very stressed right now. So as a board, as our role is to be role models for our district, what can we do to help alleviate some of that stress that our administrators, teachers, and kids and families are under right now? And that might just be a hypothetical question, but I just really have been thinking about that a lot.
It sounds like a good agenda item for a board retreat.
I don't know, I think the need is now rather than, so I don't know. I think it would be a good agenda item for a board retreat, but I don't think it should wait until then. The stress is now for them, isn't for us.
I agree. I just was sort of thinking about how we could be formal about it. But yes, I agree.
I also think part of the stress, too, the hard part is, is that some of the stress for the parents and the students are the fact that they're not going to school full-time, and that would add more stress to teachers. So it's two very different things in my mind.
We're living in a world of high stress right now, everywhere, everywhere, about everything, so it's, it's no wonder everyone's under a lot of stress. I just think about, you know, are we, as a board, adding more stress? Are we helping alleviate some stress? Are we, do they know that we really care about them and what they're going through right now? Do we understand the amount of work that is being done by our staff right now? I mean, having family members that are teachers, I know the amount of work that they're doing right now. It's, it's almost undoable.
Yeah, I think it kind of goes both. I, I agree with what you're saying, Kim. I think it goes both ways, because there's a stress for teachers who want to do more, and there's stress for kids and families who want more, and feel they aren't getting what they need. And so I, it's, it's, it's tough. It's really tough. I can see it from both ends, talking with my kids' teachers and seeing my, you know, talking to my kids who feel like, my daughter doesn't feel like she's getting the educate, you know, she knows they're trying the best, but it's slow, and she says she's bored, and so.